Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 5th, 2023 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Happy 4th of July, a day late. Hope you enjoy the festivities around the city.
Yeah.
What's going on. First up tonight is the approval of our minutes from June 7th, 2023. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of June 7th, 2023 as written in the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And we have minutes from June 21st, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of June 21st, 2023 as written in the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And we have a consent agenda tonight with one item for AFP-9590-2023, a new 394 square foot addition on the second floor of the rear facade at 10 Solitaire Cork in the R90 C-zone, medium-density residential cluster development. This is an amendment to final plan. It's a consent agenda item. Are there any questions for staff on the consent agenda?
No, very straightforward.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve or accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's moved in second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. Now we have a recommendation to Mayor and City Council on an annexation agreement. Kirk Eby is presenting from staff. And because of the long introductory paragraph, let's do it once and have you introduce it.
Really? Sure. So, good evening, planning commissioners.
Good evening, Kirk.
Good evening. I'm gonna bring up this one. And I'm bringing up an aerial of the area here. So, this is a recommendation on annexation petition X-9510-2023, which is the nine-and-a-half-acre area shown here on the screen, the Walnut Hill commercial area, along South Frederick Avenue, near North Westland Drive and Southwestland Drive. A petition was introduced at the May 15th Mayor and City Council meeting, and there are currently 52 exhibits in the record. So, the Planning Commission's role in the annexation process is to determine whether the proposed zoning is appropriate, whether the annexation plan complies with the city's master plan, and whether adequate public facilities exist to serve the annexed area. So, staff notes that the annexation petition precedes any development reviews and any actual construction. So, should the annexation be approved by the Mayor and City Council, the applicant would then need to come back and submit a site plan for review by the Planning Commission. And that site plan would provide additional detail like building elevations, landscaping, circulation, traffic studies, stuff like that. And of course, at that time, the adequate public facilities ordinance would also come into play from the city. So, at this point, I'm gonna ask the applicant's team to come up, and I believe they're going to give you a short presentation about the annexation petition and the annexation plan.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And while he's pulling that up, you just introduce yourself for the record.
Certainly. Good evening, Pat Harris with Lord Charlie and Brewer on behalf of the petitioner.
I'm Jake DiPiazza with Granite Canyon Partners.
Great. Welcome.
Okay. So, as I noted, on behalf of the petitioner, which is Walnut Hill Propco and King Fisher Associates, they are an affiliate of Standard Properties. And Jake DiPiazza is with Granite Partners, which is one of the JVs with Standard Properties. And then also, we have Bob Kite, who's with us from Bowler Engineering. So, I think the commission is fairly familiar with the property, so I'll run through this very quickly. The main shopping center is 16531 South Frederick. That's the Walnut Hill Shopping Center. And then we have two other pieces, which are 8939 Northwestland Drive. That is owned by the King Fisher entity. And then 8941 Northwestland Drive. And I would note that that's a separate ownership, but in working through the process with the staff, they suggested that we also include that property. And then the Northwestland Drive Right-Away. And I think the plan before you now shows it most clearly. So, the Right-Away is in the rose color in front of the screen. The current, the property is currently located in the county, obviously, and it's a, it has a CRT zoning designation, which allows for a maximum FAR of 2.25, of which the commercial component can be a maximum of 1.5 FAR, and the residential a 0.75 FAR. We do have a sneak preview of what the site plan may look like in connection with the shopping center, but as staff noted, that process is for the future. So, what we're showing here is, first of all, backloading, if you will, of the former grocery store in the center of the site. And then in the southwest corner, we have a retail pad site with accessory gas. And then the only other thing I would note about this plan, and the reason we wanted to show it, is to show that with any redevelopment of a site, we will do our best to try to provide as much green space as you possibly can in a shopping center. So, the, as staff noted, there's three considerations before the planning board, Planning Commission. The first one is, is the proposed zoning appropriate? So, the proposed zone in this case for the shopping center is the CT, C2, general commercial zone. And then for the Northwestland Drive parcels, it is CD. So, I'll first get into the C2 and why we think that's appropriate. You know, C2 is strictly a commercial zone, and in so designating the site that way, it will allow for the continued use of the commercial on the property. I would note that because of the existing leases, there's probably 30 years of commercial use, at least, left on this site. So, it's in line with the purposes of the C2 zone as well, which is commercial and office, to the extent it's compatible. We have no, we have no plans for office, though, as you know, the DMV is currently in that center as well. One may consider that an office, I'm not sure. But the zoning accommodates the renovation of the grocery store in accordance with the proposed grocery store's timeline, and that was really important to us. I would note that it is permissible, well, in the future, the property could be zoned CD as part of a comprehensive zoning if the city so decided that that was necessary. And I would also say that in this day and age, especially post-COVID, where everyone is trying to make a residential play, it's nice to see someone actually committing to retail and wanting to upgrade existing retail. And that's what the petitioner has in mind for this site. So, for all those reasons, we think the C2 is perfectly appropriate. In terms of the other two parcels, it's a different story. First of all, there's no immediate plans for those parcels, and they could be residential, they could be commercial, and the CD zone provides for that flexibility. Hence, we've, we're suggesting CD for those sites. The second question is, does the annexation plan comply with the city's master plan and goals? I would note that it is, the master plan identifies the properties within the maximum expansion limits. There's specific language on page 65 of the plan dealing with the shopping center, and it does, it does state that the property, if it were to be annexed, would not create an enclave, and it's contiguous with other properties within the city. And then there is similar language with respect to the two Northwestland Drive parcels on page 67 and 68. In terms of furthering the goals of the city, the overall goals of the city, one of them stated in the master plan is to attract and support businesses. This plan obviously would do that. It connects people and services. I will say that the petitioners, when they've gone out to talk to the community, and they've had numerous meetings, the thing they've heard over and over again is, please try to get a grocery store in that shopping center. So, this obviously does that. It's a reinvestment in an aging property, and it facilitates public transportation. The BRT is proposed for 355, and as everyone knows, and as you can see on this sheet, the pink area is the area that would be dedicated to accommodate the BRT. And there is a BRT station planned right in front of the shopping center, which we're, we are excited about. The final question for the Planning Commission, can it be served by public facilities? The, we have done a traffic analysis in connection with the annexation petition, and it shows that with the proposed uses, the center would still function, or the intersections around the center would still function well below the critical lane volume of 1450. There is obviously water and sewer. It's W1 S1, which is the highest category of water and sewer. And then in terms of emergency responses, fire, police, and EMT are all adequate. So, with that, we would be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I would note, actually, so the planning board in the county is scheduled to take this under consideration, to make a recommendation on July 13th. And the staff report that county staff has prepared, does recommend the annexation. They note that it's consistent with the master plan. And this property is really, we like, we like to refer to it as a missing tooth. If you would look at a zoning map, you see that there's this one little, you know, nine-acre portion that is, for a long history reason, outside the city. There have been, over the years, the city has approached the property owner to suggest annexation. It was never right previously, but we feel like the time is right, and we're excited to have the opportunity to, to put the, bring the property into the city. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Questions for the team?
Right now.
Right now.
Question, and I'm not sure if it's to the team or for staff. I'm looking at Southwestland Drive, which on the, I guess, west side of 355 is within the city limits. You see, it's not included in the annexation. It just jumped out at me as looking a little odd.
Yes. So, staff will explain that. So, when we, when staff looked at the annexation that brought in, you see on this particular, yeah, so, yeah, well, right here. So, on this particular slide, let me see if I can get the mouse to show up there. There's a little strip here along Frederick Avenue labeled as 17 something or rather, 411, something like that. So, that strip, originally, the Right-Away, when parcel B was created, the Right-Away for Frederick Avenue went up to that other line where those two Z hooks are. And later, that was abandoned. But when the city was annexing the properties across the street and annexing Frederick Avenue, it was annexed up to that actual line. So, what happened was that when staff looked at where the city line would be, we noted that on property to the south, where the Exxon is, the parcel, the parcel there sort of turns a little bit to the north there, but the city line goes straight. So, there's actually a couple of little pieces that are in, that are not in the city. So, most of it's in the city, but there's a couple of little pieces that are not in the city. And so, if Southwestland were to be annexed right now, it would actually create an enclave of a tiny little triangle of like, you know, 30 square feet or whatever it would be. So, unfortunately, we can't do that now. Now, there's also another annexation associated with the Exxon property, where the city had annexed the entire part and then realized, whoops, we have this hotel next to it that is still in the county, and we've now created an enclave. So, the city went back and unannexed one, a one-foot strip through the Exxon station. Although it's, and so, the other thing that we want to do at some point is probably have the mayor and council do a new annexation that, that then annexes the one-foot strip, Southwestland Drive, plus that little triangle piece I just described, south of the Exxon station. So, we would clean all that up. So, unfortunately, we were hoping to clean it all up and have a nice straight line now, but we're gonna have to wait a little bit longer for the Southwestland.
But are both those little parcels Right-Away? They've been dedicated?
They were actually abandoned afterwards. So, again, they were all dedicated on Platts that created parcel B, and then the parcel C1 that you see there. Then, there was an equity case that abandoned those, so I guess they realized they didn't need it for the Right-Away for 355. And so, that's kind of what happened. That abandonment happened while the city was doing the annexation. So, that's kind of what happened. It's very confusing. I did explain it a little bit better, hopefully, in the, in the report.
See, if they had GIS, you know, 30 years ago, there wouldn't be a problem, right?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope, that answered that question.
Oh, okay. I did want to make, or ask about a clarification. On the north, northeast, the parcel on, in the northeast, and the northeast portion of that parcel, is the, is the driveway on that parcel or off that parcel? Is that a pipestone to the adjacent?
So, let me bring up the other aerial right quick. Let me can look at that. I believe you're talking about the one that goes into where the Goodwill is? Is that what you're talking about? So, that's actually a separate parcel, that's a separate lot. That was actually a part of the residential community of Walnut Hill. Eventually, at some point, that was purchased by the, the, the property owner of the Goodwill site. And at some point, the city Planning Commission had requested, this is probably back in the 80s, I think it was, I don't remember off the top of my head, they had requested another sort of entrance way out of that property to help alleviate traffic. So, that's, that's basically what happened with that.
Okay, but it's clearly outside the bounds of the.
Correct. And that parcel, or that lot, is actually already within the city limit, so that was already annexed previously.
Okay. Very good. All right. One thing I'll let you know, and before the staff is talking about, it's sort of our prerogative whether or not we look for public comment on this, and I'd suggest we do. Okay. And I see some people online, and while I'm acknowledging that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Okay, not seeing anyone and not knowing if the folks online want to. Tech team, would you please play the video for comment?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
You know, hands popped up. If one does, well, in the course of our next couple of steps, I'll certainly open that up for discussion. So, I guess with that, is there any other, other questions?
Well, you want to just fill us in real quick about 3A, and that, that existing business and existing property owners, A-OK with the process and cities? So, the, we have, the staff has met with the property owner of the other business, the restaurant that's there. So, the problem is, because the disowner owns these other two properties, if we did not annex that third property with the restaurant, we would create an enclave. So, that's really what's driving that one. We have met with them. We do plan to meet with them again. That's pretty much what we still. More outreach, is that what it's? Yeah, more outreach at this point, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We do have another meeting scheduled with that property owner next Tuesday.
Okay.
Great.
And for kind of technicality purposes, they, they would have to be an applicant as well, right, for the annexation, or?
Not necessarily, and I'll refer to Frank in case he wants to correct me on this. But under Maryland law, as long as 25% of the assessed value is part of, you know, part of the annexation, then the annexation can move forward. There is a process for other things to happen in the future, but that's pretty much, you know, the, the assessed value of the shopping center is so high that it's very, it's really impossible to, for the other property owner to opt out.
Okay. I assume you guys have that figured. I was just curious what that technicality was. Okay, thank you. All right. I don't see any other moves here to comment. So, recommendation, please.
Okay. So, staff is supportive of the annexation petition and recommends that the Planning Commission make the following motion. And additional information about staff's recommendation may be found in the preliminary background report that was included in tonight's meeting packet. And that report also will be posted on the city's webpage shortly. So, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based upon the findings presented in the preliminary background report, the applicant's testimony, and the evidence in the record, find and recommend to the Mayor and City Council that the proposed C2 and CD zoning for annexation X-9510-2023 are appropriate, that the proposed annexation plan is in compliance with the city's master plan and strategic plan, and that the annexation area can be served by both existing and future public facilities. And staff further recommends that the Planning Commission defer their actual recommendation for eight days in order to receive public comments until 5:00 PM on Thursday, July 13th, 2023, and then provide the formal recommendation on the annexation petition and the annexation plan on Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. And that is 47 days prior to the public hearing that is scheduled for the September 5th Mayor and City Council meeting. And of course, staff is available for any other questions you may have. So, again, there's sort of two, two things going on there.
What does that look like tonight for a motion, then?
So, the first motion would be, the first one I read, which is to, to make a finding and a recommendation that if the zoning, if the zoning is appropriate, the annexation plan is in compliance with the master plan and the strategic plan, and the annexation area can be served by public facilities.
Okay.
And then probably a second motion to, actually, Frank, I guess they would actually, they would actually be other votes.
Yeah, if I could jump in real fast, Rob Robinson, Long Range Planning Manager. The motion, the only motion that we need from the commission tonight is to announce, you know, that eight-day.
Yeah, okay.
It's not, you will actually come back in two weeks and make the formal recommendations and take the vote on the, on the three findings, you know, in two weeks.
Take comments into consideration, right? So, yeah, okay. So, what does that motion look like?
Just the last paragraph.
Okay. To close the record as a?
Close the record as of July 13th.
Yeah. All right. So, kind of anticipating moving forward, assuming there aren't a lot of comments coming in that would change my, any concerns with moving this forward?
Nope. I mean, I had a small hesitation on the C2, just because it is so constricted. But I have such a large parcel, obviously, we want to maintain long-term flexibility. But I think we're talking about 20, 30 years, so it won't be my problem. But it'll be, yes, a lot of the younger folks here's problem. But I think, I think the, you know, the C2 makes perfect sense, and I like keeping the CDs on the, on the outside.
Yeah, and kind of to that point, though we had the CD sort of aligned along the whole corridor as a, as a vision for the future. This doesn't preclude the overall character of the corridor developing with the CD zone, with, given the, kind of the sustainability of this, this center, given the leases and the, everything else that's going on there.
Yeah, encouraging development there seems like a great first step for this decade.
And the BRT coming in as well.
Yeah. That could spur something in 10 years that, that right now just won't happen.
Were you, were you thinking MXT?
No, the CD.
The CD would be.
But you, I thought you said you may.
Well, the CD will do that. So, the corridor development zone will do a lot of what MXT does, kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah, lower density.
So, we leave the C2 for now.
So, just C2 for now.
Okay.
Be prepared when the market changes, and hopefully the BRT works out great. You guys come back in 10 years. I don't, 20 years, we'll say, so you can invest a lot of money. And then 20 years, we'll take another look at it.
Any other concerns, or questions? All right. So, I think we just need a motion to close the record.
Mr. Chair, Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission defer their recommendations for eight days to receive public comments until 5:00 PM on Thursday, July 13th, 2023, and provide a formal recommendation on the annexation petition and annexation plan on Wednesday, July 19th, 2023, 47 days prior to the public hearing scheduled for the September 5th Mayor and City Council meeting.
All right. That was a lot of detail. Thank you.
Second day.
It's moved in seconds. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck. It's a good-looking project.
All right. Next up is our public hearing agenda. And I think, Chris, you're doing this tonight, right? Chris Berger from staff is gonna present. If I understand correctly, we're gonna do a public hearing on change of use, but also a site plan. You wanna, you're gonna do them concurrently?
Correct. We'll do them concurrently.
All right. So, why don't you set that up then? So, we'll stumble through a lot of different readings here.
The applicant, Episcopal Church of the Ascension, submitted an amendment to the concept plan application, ASDP-9578-2023, and an amendment to final site plan application, AFP-9576-2023. The subject property is known as the Ascension House and is zoned CD corridor development. It's at 202 South Summit Avenue. The Mayor and Council designated the property as historic in 2010. The properties to the west and south, including a portion of Gaithersburg High School, which is over here, are zoned R90, medium-density residential. The property to the east, which is also owned by the church, is zoned RA, low-density residential, and includes a historical church and a modern sanctuary and another church-owned building. Sandy Ridge Academy, a private education center for children from 18 months to 12 years old, leases space in that church's building at 205 South Summit Avenue, across the street here. The applicant is requesting convert, to convert both floors of the building here at 202 South Summit Avenue from office to educational use for SciTech TCU, which is a nonprofit that provides scientific instruction and activities to students from kindergarten through 12th grade. This application does not pose any physical changes to the exterior of the building or to the site. Here's what the building looks like. At the June 5th Mayor and Council meeting, the council conducted a courteous review of ASDP-9578-2023 for the change of use. The council deemed the application had a minor effect, and they directed the Planning Commission to make a final decision on the amendment. Therefore, ASDP-9578 comes before the commission to change the use in accordance with Section 24-198C2. Both applications have been filed concurrently because the subject change only, or the subject project only requests a change in use and revised parking chart for the property. Staff is of the opinion that the Planning Commission can close their record and take final action tonight because the amendment to concept site plan application is so minor. If the application, if the commission approves the amendment to the concept plan application, the Planning Commission can also review the amendment to final site plan pursuant to Section 24-168, which requires Planning Commission approval for a change of use. The public hearing was duly advertised on July, or June 15th and June 22nd in The Washington Post, also posted on the city's website. Property was posted with a notification sign, and postcards went out to property owners within 200 feet. There are nine exhibits in the record. The individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting or in the Planning and Code Administration office during regular business hours at City Hall or on the city's website. This is the updated parking chart to be amended. The proposed use requires 15 parking spaces for a maximum of 69 students and eight employees. The lot currently has 73 spaces, so the change of use will still have in excess of 58 parking spaces. Here's that proposed parking chart on the previous site plan. Staff is supportive of both applications. The proposed applications comply with the purpose and intent of the corridor development zone and the Frederick Avenue master plan. The education use matches the use at the adjacent Gaithersburg High and Sandy Ridge Academy across the street, and is compatible with the existing uses nearby and will not negatively affect the surrounding area. I'll let the applicant representatives introduce themselves and add anything else they would like.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, committee members. My name is Zainab Abbas. I am the founder and CEO of SciTech TCU. And I just want you to know that our goal is to serve students in the community. And one of the challenges that we have is finding space to serve those students. And so, the Ascension House kindly offered the property so that we could meet our mission. So, that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Oh, this is Javier Garcia. I'm director of the Church of the Ascension. And one of our missions in the church is like to help our neighborhood. And I think when we made, we were talking about this opportunity. And I think it's great for the church to, to help with this, and that's why we're here.
Great, thanks. Let me ask you a couple of quick things. So, no changes are required for health, safety, accessibility, any of that, for the change of use?
The change of use is just for the, the, from office to education and then updating the parking chart. They're not going to make any material changes to the building.
And there's none required?
Eventually, they will have to do egress changes on the second floor, but that's not part of this application. This is just for the change of use and amending the parking chart.
Okay. And is there gonna be signage for the new facility?
Yeah. As a nonprofit, we don't have funds to support that, but we're looking to, at least that people know so that when someone's coming, they can recognize that that's where we are.
Okay. I assume that's in, kind of within by right, or somebody to take care of?
Yeah, they would, they would just need a signed permit application. I'll add, there is a large sign here, if you can see where the main entrance is, that says the Ascension House.
The Ascension House sign, yeah.
So, if people know that they're looking for the Ascension House.
So, that'll stay?
That'll stay.
Okay. Great, good.
What are the hours of the, I'm sorry?
No, I just want to ask that same question.
What are the hours for the facility, for the education facility?
Yeah. We are an after-school program, and we offer summer camps and winter camps. So, during the summer, the month of July, we offer summer camps, and that's from 9:00 to 3:00 for our students. And sometimes our staff will stay behind to do some after-school, after-program cleaning up and setting up for the next day. During the school year, we're an after-school program, so we start between 3:30 and, and around 5:30, and we stay around until 6 o'clock to kind of clean up and set up for the next day. So, in a sense, we don't have a set schedule because, you know, we're an after-school program. But we're basically in and out. Sometimes during the day, depending on whatever programs we have. We have a variety of programs, but it's generally after school and summer camps.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just, just one. And you said it's from K through 12, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's adjacent to Gaithersburg High School, so no concerns there at all?
Um, we don't have any concerns. The majority of our students are after-school, and we have typically a 1 to 10 ratio. But it's typically less than that. So, we have, usually have a lead instructor, an intern, and then a volunteer present. And all of our programs is typically at least two support persons on site. And all of our programs is typically at least two support persons on-site with the students. So that's never an issue and our ratio is, you know, fairly low, so there's no concern.
You said the curriculum is basically STEM?
Yes, STEM, so when I say STEM, we cover many areas of STEM, so it's not just robotics, it's not just chemistry, it's not just health. Right now, we're offering an aeronautics program for the summer. So last year, we offered a three-D printing camp. So it's diverse in terms of STEM.
Wonderful. We're casting shade on Gaithersburg High School, weren't we?
No, not at all.
My kids went there and they are troubled, so.
All right, any other questions?
No, well, it's, this is, this is a great application and obviously a wonderful use. Whatever we can, I can do to support, that's great. But I just worry about the sort of incredible overabundance of parking. And it's sort of an attractive nuisance, right? I know I've snuck in there and parked there once in a while when the school was busy. But I also just, you know, wonder about how do you control that environment when there are kids around? Because it's just such a wide-open field of asphalt. And I'd, you know, be great if we could figure out a way to use some of that asphalt or you could use some of that asphalt for whatever the aeronautics, you know, program wants to do.
Rocket launching.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I just, I don't know whether any of that would stand in the way from a staffing standpoint or whether we would stand in the way of any kind of use of the back part of that lot, you know, for, you know.
I mean, this would be the first time, you know, once we get in there, this will be the first time that we'll use that space. So we can be creative because, you know, the students will, you know, during the break time, maybe go back there during recess to play, you know, different sports activities in the back. So that's the use that will get most out of that lot because it's open space. And it's, you know, it's private, so that protects them, keeps them away from the street area because, you know, three feet is probably is a major thoroughfare. So we'll keep them in that back area protected.
Yeah, I just want to sort of go on the record as saying that, you know, we should be supportive. Should you want to, you know, keep that front two, two entries open, keep that nice drive aisle open, but then shut down the rest of it for, for whatever use you want to use it for, without changing the physical site plan for stormwater management and stuff like that. But if you want to use it for something other than parking, we should be supportive as the city and staff ought to be helping you in whatever way, you know, you might need help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? All right, seeing nobody. And again, for those of you online, please hit the raise hand button if you'd like to comment on this application. And in the meantime, Chris, why don't you wrap it up with your recommendation, please?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the applicant's testimony, the exhibit submitted the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendation approved amendment to concept plan A S D P nine five seven eight twenty twenty-three and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one sixty, one six zero G seven B. And staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant A F P nine five seven six twenty twenty-three, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code.
Great, thanks. I, I agree, I don't, I don't think there's a lot in the way of recommending wholehearted approval of this. And I believe maybe you clarified the parking field around that building is probably used on the weekends for the church, right?
Correct.
So no permanent changes, that would really be practical, but certainly during the week, if it was, you know, set up for outdoor experiments and things like that, that'd be okay. But you would keep it, you'd still be using it on the weekends, I suppose, yeah.
That's correct, yes.
That's great.
Perfect. All right, any, go ahead.
I just want to, you know, just thank the, you know, the church for offering up such, you know, something that's going to be beneficial to the greater good. And you said you're reaching your mission, you're helping her reach her mission, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, if there's nothing else, we're ready for a motion. We have two, so first is the change of use.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the applicant's testimony, staff report findings and recommendation approve amendment to concept site plan A S D P nine five seven eight dash twenty twenty-three and adopt the resolution finding it in conformance with section twenty-four dash one sixty G point seven per N B.
Second.
It's moved to the second, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. And then next up is the approval of the site plan.
Chair, I recommend that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, applicant's testimony, the staff reports findings and recommendation grant A F P nine five seven six twenty twenty-three, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code.
Second.
It's moved to the second, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck, looking forward to having, having you all in the city.
Thanks.
All right, we have a second site plan tonight for A F P dash nine five nine four dash twenty twenty-three sign package for Carnegie at Washingtonian at one zero one zero zero Washingtonian Boulevard. In the M X D mixed-use development zone, this is an amendment to the final plan. And presenting from staff tonight is one of our newest staff members, Kenar Johnson. Good evening, thanks for being here.
Good evening, good evening, complaining commissioners, it's great to be before you all today for the first presentation for planning commission. Staff is before you to present amendment to final site plan application number A F P nine five nine four twenty twenty-three. The applicant is requesting approval of the comprehensive sign package for the Carnegie at Washingtonian Center. The sign package is a part of an overall effort by the Carnegie Center to clarify vehicle, vehicular navigation, which will reduce confusion and improve safety between pedestrian and vehicular traffic. As shown on the screen, the Carnegie Center is located along Washingtonian Boulevard. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section twenty-four dash two ten, which allows the planning commission to grant a minor waiver to approve a comprehensive sign package for a property or development that includes provisions that deviate from the sign ordinance. Here we have, on behalf of the Carnegie Center, we have Gary Brent of M G Permits, and he will be continuing on with the presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Gary Brent, as Kenar said, Gary Brent, M G Permits, Blue Mountain, Virginia. We're here representing the sign manufacturer, Matthews, North Carolina, with permission from the property owner. Essentially, we're asking for two waivers, not essentially, we are asking for two waivers. The first waiver would be for the identification monument sign in the front of the facility. The waiver request is for the seven-inch letter waiver. Our letters are, our lower secondary lettering is less than seven inches. So we are asking for that. It's a design that essentially needs to be, you know, as shown on the plan so that it's legible and is able to communicate to the customers and the residents. The second waiver we're asking for is a number of signs. In addition to the monument sign, which is by right, as the staff report also points out, it meets the criteria for a freestanding sign. We're asking for four additional freestanding signs. These are essentially, they are wayfinding design signs. They're for helping the residents and visitors find and navigate their way through the property as well as drop-off points to show how to get to the main entrances, the parking garage, and so on and so forth. So that's a second waiver to allow for more than the one by right sign.
That's it?
That's it.
Sorry.
John wants more. I'm used to like, you know, a theme music or something coming up. Kenar, okay, so directional signs, let's talk about that waiver just for a moment. What is allowed or not allowed for directionals?
I'm sorry.
The code requires a number based off the acres of the property. I believe they're only allowed one under, because of the size of the property. So the additional, to request additional freestanding signs, it needs to be wrapped into the sign package.
But the initial guideline is, is X per acre or X per whatever, okay.
Well, and then if you want more than that, you just have to, you have to get a management commission waiver.
Correct.
And that's just based on the fact that it's freestanding, it has nothing to do with the content of the sign. It's just freestanding, so. In other words, if they were going to plaster a directional sign on the face of the building, we wouldn't be talking about it, but because they're freestanding, we are.
Yeah, the way the sign warrants is written, it's content neutral, so the signs are not regulated by what's on the sign, just the type of sign that it is.
Good consideration, all right, any other questions? Of them? Is there anyone in the audience that's here to comment on this application? I assume no. And if anyone online would like to comment, please do hit the hands up button and we will recognize you. I'm not seeing any right, right now. What's your recommendation?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant A F P nine five nine four twenty twenty-three Carnegie at Washingtonian Center comprehensive sign package, finding it in compliance with twenty-four dash one seven zero, twenty-four dash one seven two A and twenty-four dash two thirteen A of the city code.
Great, thank you. All right, let's back into this waiver thing.
So, yeah, so we're not, we're not actually asking for a waiver in the, in the recommendation. There is no, there is no waiver.
But, but by approving it, the waiver is inherent.
Automatically assumed, right.
It's a comprehensive package.
It's a comprehensive, there really isn't a waiver, right? We're just approving the additional signs that aren't by right.
I just want a clarification because it wasn't...
Yeah, to grant, to grant a sign, a packet or sign guidelines,
it does require the commission to grant a minor waiver. But it's wrapped into the condition, or into the motion.
Okay. So let's talk about the, the content real quick. Would you queue up the main monument sign?
Sure.
And just, so we wrap some decent findings by this. So the, the question about the seven-inch lettering really goes to the endorsement or the branding at the bottom of the sign, I guess, right? Any issues with...
Not sure I want those to be seven inches, so.
I agree, I don't know, you know, just to be clear, we had that in there in the guides because we don't want people to slow down and be squinting trying to read something and therefore cause a hazard. So clearly, this is not going to be, it's on a low, low-speed street. It's not really material to them finding their way to the, to the facility, so I think it's okay. So I don't, I assume there's no real issues with the tiny letters. In fact, you can make them smaller. All right, and if you would please, you have a, I think you have a single sheet with the directionals on it, right? Those freestanding directionals. And I believe too, on the site plan, none of these really create another branding episode on the street level. These are strictly directionals in and throughout. And I think I would just wrap the, the comment that even though this is one big building, it behaves more like a campus in terms of the ways it's spread across the site and the circulation wanders and meanders. And I think the directionals are entirely appropriate, in fact, even desired. I mean, I think it would be silly not to have them, but...
Absolutely.
No, that's a very good point. I mean, it's a little compartmentalized, so it will help out, so I think it's a great idea.
It's a little chaotic too, the campus thing, it was pushed back from the road, so it's the big turnaround. And then luckily, it has two lefts in, so even if they miss that first one, you get the second one in. So once you turn in there, I'd rather than not have to do loops, you know, to figure out where to go. So I think the wayfinding in there is really important for something like this that's set back from the street a bit. Because you, you know, we are going to have pedestrians coming out of the building, so it's, you want them to have a clear path and the cars to have, hopefully, not just circling.
I'm editorializing now, but I had a doctor's appointment on Friday and I could not find the office. And I was like, there you go, some wayfinding, so this is good.
Well, you know, it's still under construction.
It wasn't you.
But in general.
Healthcare's to the right or left. Yeah, I, I, my, my only comment is, you know, just looking at the plan and the signage locations, these are all, I mean, they're, they're sizable signs, they're four feet by, you know, five feet, five and a half feet tall at least. But, you know, where they have them located on the plans, you know, they look like they're very sensitively located. They're not creating blind spots for vehicles, blind spots for pedestrians. They're in sort of natural locations where, you know, really don't have any, any concern about size and...
It's a great point, except for the main sign, they're, they're back behind the initial drive aisles on the ground.
Are these signs going to have any lighting?
The, the monument sign has proposed exterior lighting, spotlighting. The other directional signs do not have any lighting planned. There will be no lighting for directionals.
As I recall, the site plan had a good bit of site lighting on it, so they're going to be lit with ambient light from the site. So it's, I think it'll be still very busy.
That's our understanding as well.
Great, all right, any other issues, questions, concerns? All right, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant A F P nine five nine four dash twenty twenty-three Carnegie at Washingtonian Center comprehensive sign package, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A and twenty-four dash two thirteen A of the city code. Second.
It's moved to the second, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Looks good, unfortunately, your aerial shot is way behind where you are right now. It's a good-looking project, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All right, good. So that takes us to, from the commission, Lloyd, can I start with you, please?
Nothing to add other than I hope everyone had a good, safe July fourth and wanted to congratulate Ryan, I mean, Ryan Sprigle. On his ascension to the state senate and wish him all the best and look forward to having good representation for the city, present at that, particularly for bodies helps, right?
Delegate, right?
Delegate.
Yes, delegate.
You don't want to chase, share, hide or trick question. Yeah, good point, Danny?
Just welcome to the new staff, looking forward to working with you and the other gentleman we met tonight. So welcome to the city, I hope you enjoy the city.
Looking sharp, Jim, I have to step up my game.
He's going to challenge all of us.
He's going to challenge it.
Stick around these guys, it'll all...
Yeah, it'll all fall apart.
Feel anything tonight?
Nope.
Nothing for me, all right. Did I, did I, or you just jumped in?
I chimed in my harassment, I'm done, yeah.
Greg, what's going on?
Just, again, I would like to introduce Kenar Johnson as our new planner formerly. He's going to be in the community planning team. He started in January with the city. And he did his education at Frostburg University. And most recently, he came to us from the city of Newport News. So he's got a lot of planning experience, we're excited to have him on board.
Great, welcome again.
And just a couple of dates, our next planning commission meeting is July nineteenth. And we have a joint work session on the retool Gaithersburg project on Monday, July twenty-fourth. And then I'll just add as well, we, the, we have one meeting in August, which is August second. And right now, I do have three commissioners that are getting attendance.
Perfect. You're on that night.
Yeah.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Always a surprise.
John, anything tonight?
Yeah, just a brief update on Lake Forest Mall. The staff continues to work with the W R S team on the S D P, the schematic development plan for Lake Forest. We're having big monthly meetings with a lot of small meetings in between. The big meetings have focuses. And our next one is next Wednesday and the focus is on environmental elements. Last month, it was transportation, so taking it kind of step by step. But they're going well.
So this is all in preparation for submitting S D P?
Yes, in preparation for filing, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, and interesting aside, there is an auction on right now of, of a lot of the leftovers from, from what's in that, that shopping center, so if you want to get your hands on it...
If you need Christmas decorations, it's got a truckload of them.
There's, there's the shoe stitching machine, and there's all kinds of interesting stuff, yeah.
So you've already gone through and...
My wife, my wife threatened to buy the kids' play area because our kids spent so much time playing there. But I told her we don't have room in the backyard, so.
You're the voice of reason, huh?
Well, you, you build it for them.
Who doesn't need a giant foam rubber treehouse?
And you may not be at liberty to say this, John, or talk about this, but what, and just because it comes up a lot in conversation, is there a scheduled demolition date? Or is that contingent on other things?
It's contingent on a lot of things. We are working on some legislation that might be able to speed it up. But it's a little premature to talk about.
Got it, okay.
And is there, I mean, because I get lots of questions from neighbors and people just asking, is there like a website that's going to kind of show what's going on or is there any plan for something like that?
Well, the city has a website.
I thought there was.
Yeah, a project page.
Yeah, I'll go look for it myself, I didn't...
It's got a ton of stuff.
Yeah. I'll go take a look.
Probably will be updated as the S D P gets filed with the city.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right now, it's just the sketch plan.
Okay, yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right, anything else from friends and staff and anybody else here? If not, have a good evening, we're adjourned.